9:30, I'd like to call the meeting of the Embers Executive Board of Education to order. We'll start with the question. I thought you would be just...
...to the pride of the United States of America and in due to the quality of which it stands, we're nation under God, indivisible, liberate, reasonable, and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Juprydov.
Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mrs. Gellis.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Yacarlosi.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums.
Okay.
Second. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Yacarlosi.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder.
Hi. Trying to say how nice it is to see everybody. It's a lot easier to take a motion in person than trying to manage online. Um, forgive me for having to read this, but I had some comments that I wanted to share and for the audience as well as for anybody that's watching online tonight. And this is regarding the reopening of the Embers schools. The schools actually fielded an online survey to gain feedback from our families regarding the reopening of our schools. We appreciated all the feedback and will continue to use that information as we plan for the 2021 school year. The vast majority of the Embers families in that survey stated that they were ready to go back to a physical return of school, while there were others who preferred to keep their children at home to do remote learning. Taking that feedback and guidance from the Lorraine County Public Health and State into account, our district plans to open our buildings back up on August 20th with a traditional seven-hour-a-day, five-day-per-week schedule. Families who are not comfortable with this will be able to opt into a remote learning option from their home. We will be announcing specific district building and remote learning plans during the final week of July via email, our website, social media, and other means. In the interim, district leaders will continue to work with the Lorraine County Health Commissioner, David Kobo, and observe all the guidance that we're getting from the state. Our school principals are working with our staffs at the individual building level to create their plans, and this would include plans for transportation, lunch, recess, students with special needs, visitors, and more. As recommended by the Lorraine County Public Health, all planning will center on these five themes: distancing, hand washing, screening and assessing symptoms, sanitizing and cleaning district properties, and wearing face coverages. This has been and will be a challenging time for all, but we're fully dedicated to providing high-quality education for all of our students while minimizing and mitigating the risk of COVID-19 to our students and staff. We thank everyone for their feedback as well as your support and patience during this unprecedented time. And now, I'm not sure, did anybody sign up for hearing the public?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on with our agenda then. Start with the Treasurers' Report, Mrs. Juprydov.
Good evening, Board, and thank you to everybody in person. As you have provided in the update, we closed the fiscal year, fiscal 2020, on July 2nd, and I did provide some highlights, but it's worthy of mentioning this evening. Last year, we finished the year with nearly $225,000 greater than what was anticipated, greater revenues than last year, excuse me, despite the slash state foundation. Salaries were slightly over the May forecast, benefits were slightly less by, say, $15,000. Purchase services were over the forecast, supplies came in under the May forecast, capital came in under the May forecast. That really was due to timing on pay applications for either the remainder of what is owed on the new powers elementary and concession project. But those numbers remain encumbrances and will carry over to this fiscal year 2021. Other expenditures came in less than the May forecast. Other financing, if you recall, other financing contains two line items, transfers from the General Fund and advances from the General Fund. And we were lucky enough not to have to do any advances to the federal grants this year. I was able to do the, to complete the project cash request by the deadline of June 12th. We received those monies in, so we were at zero or greater for every one of the federal grants, which is really nice. And then, we had projected deficit spending a month, about $100,000, but our deficit spending was actually less than $100,000. So, that is, that is really nice. Just to kind of recap, of course, in May, we do the five-year forecast update, and the only things that we really changed in the five-year forecast from the November forecast to the May update were things that we absolutely knew, which was what our state foundation cup was going to be. Of course, our state and public utilities both came in over forecast. We never changed anything, salaries and benefits for the May forecast, we kept those at the November forecasting amount, and of course, we were very close, we're probably 1/10 of a percent off by those. So, I just wanted to update you in open session. I have provided to you the five-year forecast line item detail. It's really not the forecast, it looks more like a P&L with revenues at the top and expenditures at the bottom. I compared fiscal 20 to two prior years, both on the month-to-date and a fiscal-to-date basis. You can see what's gone on with our cash balances, we're building cash balances very slowly, but we need to be that, which is good. And then, the June 2020 forecast line item report, this is a report that Mr. Sayers really likes, so I thought I would present it to the board so you could see the recap for the full fiscal year. But I do believe that I attached the May report in my July 2nd update, so my apologies for having to correct them in front of you. So, that then was my report for this evening. Did anybody have any questions on that?
If I could just follow up, if that's okay, I may have communicated this before, but I think it certainly bears repeating and sharing with the board that the Ohio Department of Education, and it took a time to do this now at the end of the fiscal year, and one of the best practices of the Ohio Department of Education is that they recommend a minimum of one to two months' worth of expenditures to be held in cash reserve. And his recommendation from the ODE website, our board policy actually takes that a step further, and our board policy requires that we always have 90 days or three months' worth of expenditures in cash reserve. And in actuality, the way we finish the fiscal year, we actually have almost six months or 180 days in cash reserve. So, I wanted to share that just to kind of reinforce how we are going far above beyond what the ODE recommends in terms of financial best practices. And it's also especially appropriate that we talk about it now because that's the kind of thing that's going to help us weather the financial storm that we find ourselves in with the reductions in state funding and that type of thing. So, I just thought it was timely to reiterate that information.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Two questions.
Yes.
Explain why are we seeing the then and the now? Is that, is that because we are entering into contracts or someone's entering into contracts, we're tired of getting the PO issue? Why is it all of a sudden we're seeing, almost every meeting we're seeing, which in the past we haven't seen, what's causing that?
Well, first of all, Ohio Re-Maxx code dictates that any invoice that is presented to the treasurer for which you do not have the purchase order. Ohio Re-Maxx code states that that goes to the board for appeal, all right? Stating that the budget is free from encumbrance and any monies to the General Fund were in the process of collection or that are being collected. So, that's the first thing. I'm not going to approve anything of the treasurer for which I do not have the latitude by the state of Ohio, right? So, that's part of the answer. The other part of the answer is we are at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, these are, for instance, FTG is our copier contract. Our copier potentially has changed names a number of times in the last couple of years. So, that's something, the copier contract, that was approved by the board, I believe, over two years ago because it was before I started. So, the district, the board, has approved the expenditure for monthly copiers. So, you've already approved that part of it, right? But with the beginning of the fiscal year, the purchase order was not in place at July 1st. That's very often the case. Some districts don't open the new fiscal year until about the time we're in right now. But we had to have budgets built and did modify the budgets a bit before that purchase order was put in. So, that's why you're seeing that the invoice was dated prior to the purchase order. But that is now a super-length purchase order, which will cover the entire fiscal year's lease, so we shouldn't be seeing this again. The next one is frontline. Frontline is our absence tracking, and it's also our APLO track, which is how we track our applications from posting the vacancy all the way through submission of their application materials, excuse me. So, again, same situation with FTG. Budgets may not have been in place to be able to encumber the entire amount of the obligation to the vendor. So, lengthy answer, but it's multi-fold.
It's an issue of getting the invoices and sending the people.
Yes.
On the FTG one, I see there are, past new run 1196, is that just a crossover? The amount of looking to be approved, where's the 12,095, but the invoice is 13,291?
I would need to, you know, look at the invoice again, which I don't have.
Yeah, the invoice shows past new charges 119665, total amount is 13,29165. This is, this is the 12,095. Maybe 1100 is just already paid, it was just a matter of just showing up on the invoice.
It has.
That's what I'm guessing.
It definitely has been paid. I can assure you that we had 12 months of copier lease expenditure in fiscal 20. But what I can tell you is this is a vendor that nearly every month, we have difficulty with the invoice. They, they are very, they take a long time to post our payments, and then they also don't invoice us on the same day every month. So, often, our accounts payable department is calling over to the vendor, trying to get an invoice. We often have late charges, not of our own making, but due to invoicing issues and such. So, we're always on top of this particular monthly lease payment.
Is that a vendor we can sum at some point, be able to, if they continue to do this? I mean, in my business, I've had those issues with vendors, just, I take it to the end of the contract and they're out, I just won't renew.
Copier and...
And copiers are notorious.
Yeah, they're notorious for being difficult contracts to manage. So, at some point here in the next few years, we will certainly be in a position to go out for quote and look at other vendors as well. Is that, is your question?
Yes, I'm good.
Yep, but you had two questions.
You answered both.
Okay, very good.
And who else? Here are nothing else, I'll take a motion for Treasurers' Recommendations, 7A through E.
No.
No?
E is the second one.
I'm sorry.
It's 7D, 7D, please.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Sorry, missed it.
It's okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, actually, B needs to be by itself, please. Which one?
B.
And B?
B.
Recommendation, 7A, C, and D, right?
Okay. Okay, good, now? Okay, roll call for 7A, C, and D.
Mr. Yacarlosi.
Hi.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder.
Hi.
Now, I'll take a motion for Treasurers' Recommendation, 7B. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Engel.
Mr. Eng.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mr. Yacarlosi.
Hi.
And Mrs. Snyder.
Hi.
So, do you want to discuss B?
Yes. 7D, you'll see, indeed, is a very lengthy, very lengthy resolution. It's heavily statutory, we've seen one very similar to it when the district issued bonds for the new towers elementary. This by money dollar issue, however, is for the Embers Public Library. We are moving forward with issuing bonds, hopefully this month or early next month, for the bond issued that passed in March. And this is the final resolution that the board will see in order to proceed with issuing the bonds. I will certify this resolution, send it on to bond council, and in background, all of us, the school district, the library, the bond underwriter, the bankers, and bond council are all working on the preliminary official statement, which will become the official statement then when it's approved. Do understand that the board, excuse me, that the Embers Public Library is benefiting from the high borrowing of the school district. So, this will count it as debt against the school district, but it's, it's not worth. The bond letting for the library covers the entire debt obligation. Have any questions?
Their, their bond pricing is based on our, on our rating?
Yes.
Okay. Cool.
Very fortunate.
Good for them, guys.
Yeah, they're very fortunate, yes.
And just so everyone's aware, that's because we're the fiscal agent for the...
Yes, it's considered, Embers Public Library is considered a school library. So, that is why the, we are the fiscal agent, the district is the fiscal agent for the public library.
Any other questions? And then, I'll take a motion to approve Treasurers' Recommendation, 7E.
Say.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mr. Yacarlosi.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder.
Moving on to superintendent recommendations, or report, I should say.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Snyder. A couple of things. First of all, I just wanted to thank Sarah Walker, our Director of Student Services, for filling in for Mr. Molemire. He is enjoying some well-deserved vacation this week, so again, Sarah, thank you for being here, and she will do a great, great job. I think she's looking forward to providing bikes.
Yes, I think.
Yeah. Bikes update, yeah, so. And then, the only other thing I had is I just wanted to update on the reopening plan and where we stand. Wanted to highlight a couple of things, obviously, as the board is with, you know, very challenging situation, you know, that we find ourselves in, and, yeah, and obviously, not possible to develop a plan that everyone will like and will agree with, but we've tried to approach this in a way that's very collaborative in nature. And we wanted to seek input and try to gather some input from our families that in the community we serve, try to get a handle in terms of what most of our families seem to be looking for as it relates to the opening of school. This was Snyder mentioned in that opening statement there. The feedback was overwhelmingly that families wanted to reopen school with strict adherence to health guidelines, and that actually was very consistent across all four buildings, which we thought was interesting as well, especially at Powers. The numbers were highest at Powers in terms of, you know, favoring the return to the traditional school day. But having said that, we also know and we understand that some parents are not comfortable with that or will not be comfortable with that for many different reasons. So, it was important to us as we worked through this process to provide choices, and ultimately, it's, it's a choice for parents. We don't want to impose a particular plan that doesn't work for everything. So, with that in mind, that we are also in the process of developing an online option, which will be taught by the Embers instructors. We don't have the exact numbers in terms of how many people will be interested in that online program. Once our detailed plans are made available later in the month, then we'll start to gather that information in terms of how many families want to take advantage of that option. From the survey, it was indicated that about 23% would be interested in an online option. So, again, the opening of school is still five weeks away. We don't know what's going to happen with the virus. Things could be better, they could be worse, they could be similar to what they are now. So, obviously, many, many variables at work here. So, I wanted to emphasize kind of that community input piece of it because the plan that we're moving forward with reflects the feedback that we've received from our community or the majority of our community. The other thing I wanted to mention is working with our staff. We've had, we began, I remember, it may have worked, I think it was, Mr. Engel, you had mentioned, it's important for us to start planning in a proactive way, start looking at, brainstorming different options, and our administrative team started doing that late May, early June. We've had a couple of meetings right here in this very room where we kicked around a lot of different ideas, I know Sarah's been a part of those meetings, and brainstorming a lot of different scenarios. We also have had two meetings with the leadership of the University Teachers Association prior to the governor releasing this guideline. So, again, working very collaboratively with our staff, and one of the things that we worked through at those two meetings is that we all agree that it was going to be very important for each building to kind of work collaboratively, building principal along with staff in that building, to develop plans specific and unique to that building. Because we know that arrival and dismissal, for example, is a lot different at Powers than it is here at the high school, where lunch is different at more than it is here at the high school. Change of classes, all those kinds of things, there's many unique characteristics and unique challenges that each building has to work through. So, that's one of the things that we kind of decided when we had those meetings in June with the leadership of the Embers Teachers Association, is that we were going to rely heavily on staff and working together with the building principals to develop those plans. So, that is actually in the process of happening right now. I know there have been, I think, at least one meeting at each of our four buildings. I know Mr. Kermit, our buildings and grounds supervisor, I know he was here earlier, has been involved in those meetings. Dan Pasci from Service is in the loop as well. And the feedback that I'm getting from our principals is that there's great discussion, a lot of collaborative problem solving taking place, a lot of creative ideas that are coming out of those discussions. So, if those discussions are ongoing, certainly it will keep the work posted as we move through that. And then, of course, the other piece of this is direction from our local health commissioner. And I have to say that we are very, very fortunate here in Lorraine County. Dave Kobo, his staff, and the Lorraine County Health Department have just been fabulous. He has taken the time, he has met with us on a weekly basis since the start of that in March. Every Friday morning, all the county superintendents meet, and he joins us for those meetings as well as, I should say, Representative Miller, Representative Manning, Senator Mann, they join us for those meetings as well. So, it's just been a lot of good discussion. And I know many of my colleagues in other counties are somewhat jealous that they don't have that weekly collaboration with their health commissioners in the county, their counties, they don't even have your county. So, our most recent meeting was this past Friday, a lot of good discussion, a lot of different topics, as you can imagine, lunch, arrival, distancing, face coverages, recess, phys ed classes, music classes, I mean, just a ton of things were discussed. One of the things, obviously, we talked about and shared with us is that the virus doesn't do as well outdoors as it does indoors. So, you know, this is the time for classes and teachers to go outside, maybe extend some of those recess times and look at utilizing the outdoors as much as we possibly can. So, again, he's just got a wealth of support and information for us and guidance, and he will probably have his final guidance document completed, I would think, within a week. So, again, we've kind of put in place this plan so that we have the survey results, we're working with staff on specific plans for each building. At the same time, we're working closely with the health commissioner in terms of his guidance from a health perspective, and frankly, you know, he's the expert. We're educators, we're not experts in public health, so that's where we rely heavily on his insights and perspectives. So, again, our hope is to pull together all of this information and then communicate more specific information, specific plans, before the end of July. And then, at that point, we hope to get information from our community, our families, in terms of how many wish to enroll in the online program, and then we'll have to start working with, you know, how many, or grade levels, those types of things, we'll work with the staffing piece of that as well. We also have already sent out a survey to our staff to find out how many of our staff are interested in either teaching fully online or partially online, again, depending on what the need is. So, that data is being pulled as well. So, our hope is that all of this will be compiled, and we'll come together, and our next update will be at the end of July after we're done with this. Just wanted you to have that information and that update and overview, and that can place right to work. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes.
My question, my question on that would be, is if I say I want to do online, and then I've done online for a month, and then say I want to go do class, are we, I'm sure we've addressed that in some form or fashion? So, how am I going to deal with that?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's one of the things that's come up. We've talked actually about that with other districts. From what I understand, some districts are looking at like a semester commitment. Other districts, I've heard, we've kicked around the idea here of a nine-week commitment. We don't, and there's advantages and disadvantages to both. It's more of an issue at the high school level where you're talking about a specific semester-long course, those kind of things, than it would be maybe at the elementary level. It's possible, it could be different based on the building. So, to answer your question, yes, we talked about that, but we haven't made a final decision in terms of specifically what that guideline would be. My follow-up, that everyone's going to get a letter grade, irrespective of whether they're online or in person? Yes, we, the online program, we've talked again about that extensively, will look different than what it did, obviously, this past spring. We were all kind of thrust into it very quickly, and our staff just did a wonderful job of adapting, adjusting, and kind of making the best of a very unusual situation. As the board is aware, we passed some resolutions that gave us flexibility in grading because our focus was first and foremost on the health, social, emotional wellbeing of our students. But looking at this year, obviously with more time to plan, the grading and expectations for that online program would be much different than what they were this past spring. Right? I don't think I have a question. Better run, I'll be honest.
Um, question here.
Roll.
Well, in your discussion with Lorraine County Health, you and our old staff, we have certain areas of the district in every single building that are frontline, I'll call them frontline people. For example, in this main lobby here, everybody coming in is usually hitting Marie or your desk, okay, or your secretary's, Janet, people like Janet. What consideration has any been given? What consideration has any been given putting up those plastic shields? It seems like everywhere you go, doctor's offices, wherever they have plastic shields put up at the frontline, those are the people who are going to be, that are going to get exposed first. Has there been any consideration of putting up these shields? Just in our strategic area in every one of our buildings?
Yeah, that's one of the things that actually has come up in our building meetings. Chuck and I actually just talked about it again today. Looking at, because we're aware, the offices or the grading area, if you will, is different. It is so different here at the high school versus what it is maybe at Powers Building or Ward or Junior High. The secretaries are, for example, the secretary of Junior High, the secretaries are a little bit back further from the front counter. So again, I think what we're going to do is Chuck, myself, and principal will take a look at each office area and do what we need to do in each space. And you can get, oh, here you see about two places. Here, right here, main lobby. Then when you get into the main office, you have another area right there. Each building is different, but that's, yes, that's one of the things that's come up very common, that you see this, obviously, in offices and stores. You know, we have a son that he's working part-time at the general. Of course, they have those, and so he's experienced that from a worker standpoint. So yeah, it's just a lot of things are being discussed. In fact, I had somebody yesterday share with me. They said, Steve, it seems like we solved one problem or answered one question and figured out how we're going to do something, and then two or three others kind of surface. So it's going to evolve. And I have to say that a big part of this plan would be, yes, we'll have a plan at the end of July, first part of August. But at the same time, we have to be ready to adjust and adapt because we don't know what it's going to look like in mid-September. We don't know what it's going to look like in November. And there's just, there's so many variables. There's so many, there's so many things that we don't have control over. What we're trying to do is focus on the things that we do have control over. And as I have a teacher just share with me last night, he said, Steve, we've got a lot of great people who are very passionate about Amherst, about our students, about our families, about our communities, and together, we can figure it out. And that's what this is all about. Our staff is our greatest resource in terms of working through these kinds of problems. They're on the front lines, and they know the day-in, day-out challenges of their particular job, and we're working hand-in-hand with them. And again, there's a lot of things. I sent out a tweet today. There's a lot of things that I really appreciate about our staff. But probably at the top of the list, and the board is aware of this, the ability to collaboratively and creatively problem solve and deal with adversity is probably at the top of the list. We can talk about example after example. The day the virus popped out over here at Powers, we had to evacuate the building, and the little ones came over here to the high school, and just example after example. So we'll get through it. We've got a great bunch here in Amherst, and collaboratively, we put our minds together, go figure it out. But yeah, there's many, and there's so many things that have come up, and we don't have all the answers yet, but we're trying to work through them all at the time.
And then I thought, when you were talking, has the school calendar come about, like changing it? Like the colleges are talking about, like not having, like going back after? We would do the same thing, but something of that sort. Like a lot of the colleges aren't going back after Thanksgiving. They're going to want to send all the kids home, and then everybody come back again.
Yeah, from what I understand, colleges, some of them are starting earlier and finishing at Thanksgiving, and then they're hoping to have that five, six week period before, you know, the kids come back in January. We haven't talked about that yet here. I mean, there's been some conversation amongst superintendents in the county about potential changes in school calendars. And of course, we all have different calendars anyway, based on a lot of different factors. Some of us are starting August 20th, within a day or two. Others are starting after Labor Day. Others are starting the last week of August. So as of right now, we're planning on starting August 20th. But again, that could change. And we'll just have to kind of work with that, and then how can you post things to work with?
I think given the time it could take to secure these plastic shields and then get them up, given the time we have left, five weeks, I think that's a business we've got to make quickly. If we're going to do it, we have to pull the trigger.
Yeah, Chuck and I were just talking.
There's a guy in the building that can make.
Yeah, and we've actually had, as you can imagine, lots of emails from a lot of companies looking to sell various products. And trying to sort, what's the best value and that type of stuff.
This is a follow-up to what you talked about there. I'm sure we've talked about limiting the amount of people that would be allowed to come to our doors.
Yes. Yeah, that's one of the things about visitors, how we work with visitors.
And vendors.
Yeah, vendors. There's just so many, the COVID houses come up. This may not be your reality, open houses is what we use. I mean, open houses, you know, obviously, big crowds of people and that type of thing. So it impacts so many different things. Yeah, we've even, you know, one of the ideas that's come up again, not fire pies, not part of the plan, but one of the suggestions that's come up from some personnel is that maybe somebody comes in, they call, and then we take the child out to the car, out to mom and dad's car versus having mom and dad come in. And of course, trying to, because we need meetings and that kind of thing, the online zone, that's limited. Obviously, as much as possible to those in the building, to students and staff. Again, just a lot of things that we're looking at. None of it finalized at this point.
In your discussions with county health partners and so on, what kind of considerations are given to any kind of testing that we would do here? For example, people coming in, are they going to take temperatures? Is every student coming in every day going to be checked before they're allowed in the building? I mean, I've sat down this afternoon and thought of a million different things. So I answered, I asked myself one question, and all of a sudden, I dominated about 10 to 12 different scenarios. I said, geez, you know, if there is testing, who pays? Someone test positive, say a teacher tests positive, and the teacher has 100 students. Those 100 students now to get quarantined and tested, I mean, to just drive them, sitting there, they could kind of stick a bullet into a mess.
Yeah, and there's so much, symptom assessment is one, obviously, one of the big things that the health commissioner is looking at and helping to find guidance, which comes out this week. But you know, the idea of checking temperatures of students as they come in is that feasible and practical when you start thinking about the people lining up and that type of thing. And again, one of the things we're looking at is trying to, again, partner with families to look at doing a lot of the symptom assessment at home before the child comes to school. And again, the health commissioner knows he has psych guidance and recommendations that he's going to come out with. But there's just a lot of different things. At one of the things you have mentioned is that we're trying to minimize, one of the things that's come up in buildings, instead of having students move to different rooms throughout the building, is that we would have staff, obviously, you know, students come in, they're taking a room to try to keep them there as much as possible. And it seems to make sense to have maybe different teachers rotating in that room versus moving students from place to place during the day. So again, you can imagine the logistics. Again, I have to say, our principals, our staff, our support staff, just talked to Maura Hicks, our Hope See president's staff room. She was going to give me an update on some things. It's just a matter of pulling together, and we'll figure it out. There's just, there's so many different things, and people are working so hard during their vacation time to make things happen and make sure we're ready to go across. So again, on behalf of our staff, I can say that we're going to do our best.
I have one more question, Steve, on the, you took off the Lorraine County superintendents. So would you envision, and I know you can't tell me the details, but would you envision that people would find similar plans in the Lorraine County schools? Because I know some people have compared what our school's going to do to, you know, other schools in other, you know, areas. I mean, it seems like each one's going to be so individualized. It's going to be hard to compare, you know, every school.
Right, and the idea was, that's a great question. The idea was for the superintendents to come together with the health commissioner and come up with some guidance that could help all districts. And so that's kind of the process that we've been involved with. And Dave, as I mentioned, is in the process of putting together that final document. Because there are certain principles and certain ideas and guidance that apply to everyone, regardless of grade, regardless of what district, building. But again, there are so many uniquenesses from district to district in terms of, for example, buildings. Building, every district's facility situation is different in terms of class sizes, square footage. There's just so many different variables. But that was the idea, is to come up with some things that kind of apply to everybody, but at the same time, there has to be latitude for different districts to do what makes sense for their district. So I think you'll see some similarities across districts in Lorraine County. But by no means I can think that everyone would be wanting the same. I think there will be differences across the county.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Sanders? Need a break?
I'm fine, thank you.
Are there any administrator reports to cover tonight?
That's all I can.
Mr. Molnar.
I changed my hair.
You're wearing Tom.
I know, right? I was saying, it looks really nice. Thank you very much, very much. Thank you guys for letting me be here and sitting at the table today. I do have a couple of things I want to touch on. One of them involves in later in the agenda, their educational recommendations. I'm asking you to please approve the Amherst Online Academy handbook. And I want to take a minute to kind of clarify, this is separate than any reentry online options that we're talking about when we talk about what is our reopening plan. Amherst Online has been around for several years. We've had this handbook that's kind of a work in progress as we're working on our policies and procedures for the program. But really, it's been an alternative program for students who, it's got options for K through 12, but it's been primarily used in our upper grades for prior recovery, for students who are out for medical, you know, short period, long period of time. We've used it as discipline options so that if students make poor choices during the school day, they can still continue on with their education using this online option. When we're looking at our remote learning with our reentry, we're looking at Amherst teachers with, you know, like I was speaking to, which you had asked us. That way, they're staying connected with the teachers in the building. And so whenever, whether it's after a quarter or after a semester, whenever they come back, they're still connected with those teachers and with the students who live in the building. So it's not the same, when we talk about our online options for our reentry, the Amherst Online Academy, it's not the same thing. The other thing I wanted to touch base with you on is, Amherst will be hosting a Second Harvest Drive-Thru Mobile Food Pantry on July 30. This is going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 at the junior high. And we are, our district social worker, Jill Mayorka, has been working behind the scenes this summer trying to bring one of these to our area. It will have frozen meats, it will have non-perishables, it will have produce that folks can drive up and pick up. You may have seen that the Second Harvest has had a few of these around the county over the past few months. And this one, we are doing with a partnership with the Amherst Police Department, with Lorraine County Education Service Center, Second Harvest. The National Park will be there. So it's really going to be a nice opportunity for our families locally to get some needed support. That's all I have.
Thank you. Everybody have cancer. I knew you.
I knew you would. So I like said.
What is, you know, what would be my role if I didn't have? As far as the college plus program, I'm sure that you will might have been working with community college to make sure that that will all come together, whether it be, because a lot of times our students travel there, so I'm sure they're in that for all in-class, or they're going to do a combination, is playing into that. I just know that there's some parent concerns that will their students be able to earn as many college credits as we have earned in the past because they know our students have earned more college credits in the county than any other school district. So I just want to make sure that that communication is open and we're going to clearly make sure that the juniors and seniors, which is basically who take those courses, are going to not lose out in any way.
Well, and that's going to be the important thing, you know, in talking about, you think you answered one question, and then several more pop up, is we offer a lot of variety for our students. And that's one of the trickiest things about trying to figure out all these reentry plans is we don't want our kids to miss out on anything more than they may have missed out on in the spring. And so providing all those opportunities. So it's working with all the partners to make sure that's taken care of. I would be happy to take that back to Mr. Molnar so that way he can get back to you on what the plans are for that.
Well, I'm sure they'll be outlined. But I had a couple of people asking about that because they have seniors. And they said, Jimmy, we need to make sure that they're going to be able to get those college credits because when they apply to school, they go into the status of a sophomore versus a freshman. And that's a big deal to them, you know, from that perspective. So I just wanted to kind of hear how community college is working with it because sometimes the college courses are taking them from community, partnerships, they're taking them from Holy Green, they're taking them from somewhere else. So I just think, you know, it's a whole different element that you know we're worried about because when they go there, they were getting educated from Kent versus community college. And I know a lot of our teachers also do instruction for the college plus program through community college. So I just wanted to hear kind of what the thought process was, and I kind of thought maybe you even have all of those answers. But at least Mike can research them for next.
He will research them and get back to you.
Okay, great.
Anyone else?
Going back to the food drive.
Yes.
Do you have to register for that, or just people show up?
They, so Second Harvest started the registry recently with the last few that they've had. And so they're kind of piloting the registration. I'm not sure if it will still be in place. They've got a couple of mobile food pantries happening before ours. But we've got some preliminary flyers that'll be going out, and then they're going to let us know if we're going to need to do a registration form.
And that, is that for just the community or anybody?
That's anybody. And from what I've heard, there were, our social worker was at the one on Saturday. I can't remember where it was, but she said there were several folks from the Amherst code that had registered and gone through the line there. So I know there are access to these, and so it's just nice for us to be able to bring it home and then not have to make so much of it drive.
Thank you. Can you tell us your name?
Jenny Walker-Noyes, I'm pastor of Heritage Presbyterian. We use Second Harvest for pantry drive. We're using a truck pantry right now, so everything gets placed in the trunk. But they use a pantry track program that can register on the spot. And it tells them to compete with a computer. I do it on my cell phone when we have our monthly pantry in charge. So it's quick, it's easy, nobody has to get out of the car. Stand right at the car window, just to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
And I know they had to sign up for training, so I'm assuming that's what they...
I can show it to you.
Okay, I'd love to see it. I'm glad you're here. Your name was again?
Jenny Walker-Noyes, Anna White.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You finished? I finished, okay. You finished with me?
Yeah. No, I'm just trying so hard.
No, I'll reserve my comments today.
Mr. Anger?
Yes. JBS, being the same, we are working through some of the same issues. I mean, in a whole different scale, using guards to reopen. We want to work in this week to talk about some of those things because the lab component is where we're struggling. So I think you'll probably see more proportion coming online. This is just my interpretation of what I know we discussed. It hasn't been worked through in any form or fashion yet. But I think you'll see more of the regular particular classroom being done online, and then people going to school probably two or three days, alternating in this day from a lab station. Just because they're happening, we can't teach welding online, okay? So instead of having that every day, they may have a whole day or so. So that's being worked on from that perspective. So I'm sure there will be some more discussion of that during the meeting. The other thing, the final vote on the levy, which will hit the ballot, 10 donates. It'll be a 10-year. It'll be a 10-year, let's see, 6 mils, $1,000 evaluation from that perspective for permanent improvement, which has been on the ballot before. There's been a lot of debate and discussion of what did decide to move forward. Putting that on the ballot. So stay tuned for exciting.
Sure, we'll tell you that.
But any other questions, Cory? Okay, so.
You move on to personal recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. I know the board's had an opportunity to review these items. Just wanted to draw attention to a couple of these items. I wanted to mention your supporters were Nikki Campbell, our assistant principal's here at the high school. Received a nice opportunity to become the director of people services with Keystone Schools. And Nikki was only with us for a year. But we know that we hire good people and talented people, they're going to get other opportunities. And after just one year, Nikki earned this opportunity, Keystone, a really nice opportunity for her professionally. Obviously, we're going to miss her, but just a nice professional opportunity for her. We actually had, was thinking about this earlier today. Three of our building administrators over the last three years have earned promotions to central office positions in other districts. As you may remember, Bill Miller became director of personnel with Southfield, Leinhurst, Leinmay, our high school principal. Became the director of personnel for Hites. And of course here, Nikki Campbell with the director of people services at Keystone. So that tells me that we're hiring the right people. When they have those opportunities to go on and move into other professional positions, that's a good thing. Fortunately, we are able to replace these folks with equally talented folks. And with that in mind, I wanted to draw attention to item C. Nick Tony, many of you know him, has been a fourth grade teacher for us and has just done an outstanding job. And it's our recommendation that he fill the assistant principal position here at Sio High School. The position was only open a couple of weeks and we had well over 50 applicants, 15 applicants for screen online, six in-person interviews, three interviewed as finalists, and Nick emerged as that person. And I just wanted to say too, one of the things that we talked about during the process is, as we look at candidates, administrative candidates, is how they would respond in a situation like we're in now. It's one thing to be in a leadership position when all is going well and you just kind of move things along. But when you're in the midst of adversity and you're in the midst of dealing with significant challenges, that is when true leadership really emerges. And so as we talked about that with Nick, he is such a positive guy. He doesn't focus on problems, he focuses on solutions. It's one thing to identify a problem, anyway, to that. It's another thing to figure out a solution to that problem. And that's one of the things that stood out with Nick is that he's a problem solver. He's calm, he's level-headed, he's positive, he just brings so much to the table. And I would say also very, very community oriented, very community oriented. So again, just a pleasure to be able to recommend Nick Tony as our next assistant principal. I did check with Mr. Teller today and from what I found out, Nick is actually, because he didn't go to be here tonight, he's on his way back from Michigan, I think. He's been out of town for a weekend. So we're hoping to have him maybe come to our talks for a meeting. So we can say, well, we can officially at that meeting. And then the last item F, this is kind of an unusual item, again, related to the uncertainty of the reopening, is that obviously fall sports, very much up in the air at this point. We're hearing that we could get some guidance before the end of week from the OHSAA. They had some changes there, the executive director resigned. So they're in transition with their executive director. So that's, it's kind of some tough things, obviously, that they're dealing with down there. So we don't know, are we going to have fall sports or not? If we do start the fall sports season, will we be able to complete the fall sports season? Or will it end in September, October, whatever? So given that the fall sports season typically starts the first of August with the practices, that's when the official season starts. And our next board meeting isn't until August, I think it's the 10th. This, pending your approval, this resolution would give us the ability, Amy and I, to work out a memorandum of understanding with our teachers association in terms of compensation for our fall coaches. And of course, once that is finalized, once we know what's happening, we would obviously bring that back to the board. So that is a kind of unusual recommendation. But again, the situation we're in, timing of everything, wanted you to have that rationale. And that was something that was actually recommended by our attorney rather than wait. We kind of thought it was a good idea to kind of proactively put this in place. Let's see here, we'd like to recommend items 10A through 10F.
Second. Discussion?
In regards to fall sports.
Yes.
Let's assume that we're going to have fall sports. I'm going to play a quick one. How are we controlling the audience? How are we controlling the spectators? What are we going to do in terms of social distancing? I'm sure the athletic department is on that, it has a plan in place, but that will become a hot button, especially for the spectators who don't have someone playing ball. So have we any thoughts tonight?
We've talked about that, we've had preliminary conversations, we've heard that there may be capacity limits to stadiums, a certain percentage of what the capacity is. We've talked about online ticketing. We've again talked about a lot of different things, waiting to see if we have fall sports. One of the things I just heard over the weekend is that, one, again, just speculation, one of the possible scenarios is that fall and spring sports could be switched. Spring sports could, traditional spring sports could take place in the fall, fall sports could take place in the spring. I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm just saying that's one of the things.
Some of the junior colleges.
We've also heard that there's a good chance we won't have fall sports. So we've heard all kinds of different things, but we really need direction. You know, for the Ohio State Athletic Association, sooner rather than later. And just so that we can deal with some of those kinds of issues.
So are we dealing with marching band as a sport? Or are we dealing with it some other way and is it happening?
Well, that would be, I would assume, if we didn't have fall sports, probably we wouldn't have marching band.
I'm thinking, but if we do, it's a similar habit. How are we going to transport? Or are we not transporting to a away game? Those are the kind of questions that I should be interested in because, you know, we take how many buses for the band now? We didn't have to take triple that number of buses, or what are we going to have to do to make that happen? Are we taking everybody? I mean, are we taking the drum corps, I mean, the drum corps, the choir corps, and all of those people? Or on the way game, are they just not going, it's just the band? I just think that those are questions that are going to start surfacing because it's a band thing happening, I have had that twice in this state of college. No, certainly the band thing is happening because, you know, those are long, hard day for a band thing. They normally start before it's part of August. So those are just, I just, I know you're working on all that, but I just think that, you know, we talk about sports, but we've got to remember that the arts people too have some concerns about some of those things.
Yeah, whole transportation, I think that our county meetings, we've spent a lot of time talking about transportation, how do you social distance on a bus? Some of the ideas are that it's almost impossible to social distance on a bus. So maybe, of course, you get into possible scenarios with face coverings and, you know, those kinds of things, but just a lot of different things that also applies to athletics and maybe anything where we're transporting the students. So, yeah, and I would have to through this camp, playing football.
You know, I don't actually, I don't have problems transporting the tennis players. We can social distance. How do we, how do we make 60 guys not be on top of each other, you know, shoulder to shoulder for the most part on a bus? And they're not going to agree, they're going to get on their sweat, they're going to get on their pod and yucky and mucky after they play ball? And you know darn well they're not going to put on a mask? And then I just think that that is more of a concern of mine than the playing ball. You know, getting them there and getting them back.
Absolutely.
So those are concerns that I think that we need to make sure that when we do announce, whether we're ready to have them or not, we make sure we have all of that stuff completely outlined. You know, because if it's going to be the, well gee, we will provide busing, but if a parent wants to drive, I mean, swim people, parents drive a lot of times, correct? You know, some of those kind of things. So we have to be concerned in what kind of waivers and liability issues do we have to be concerned with?
Yeah, and probably what happens even addressing our regular transportation to and from school, we're probably in a set of guidelines that obviously we develop in conjunction with the health department and some parents may or may not be comfortable with that. We were surprised that the survey, the number of folks that, yeah, we're fine with, you know, with transporting our children on the bus, others, not so much. And, you know, they may want, you know, choose to drop your children off at school or whatever, but the same game with athletics. Have to be flexible there. Again, our whole idea throughout the school reopening process is to give parents choices so that they're not feeling like they have to do something. If they don't feel comfortable with the bus guidelines, then there's an alternative. Or if they're not comfortable sending their child to school, then there's always an alternative. So I do apologize that I don't have all.
Apologize.
All that we're just, yes.
I don't want us to come out with half of them. I want us to come out with all of them. So when we say we're going to do this, we're going to do a band, we're going to do football, we're going to do this, we're not doing any of it, that's okay too. But whatever we do, let's make sure that we got everybody, any questions we possibly could think of that a parent's going to ask, that we have an answer.
Yes.
What should we possibly? Possibly, because they're going to think of something that we haven't thought of. This serves you. And then what are we going to do? So I just want us to have thought that, and I know you bring this to me then, and.
Well, and that's why I think really the case, and I just talked about this, is we really need direction from the board, as I say, you know, we received the direction on July 2nd from the governor in regards to school reopening, but you know, here we are, it's July 13th, and we still have a decision on fall sports, which you're technically supposed to start practicing in about, what, two and a half weeks? So we need that direction.
And sometimes that direction is very vague.
Yes.
So that's why.
It's going to create more questions.
Yeah, you know, it's very vague because I deal with that same thing as day also, and it's very vague. So you have to, or we have to, in this case, the school district has to establish what we're going to do and then get that approved by the health commissioner and if what we're doing is okay. So that's why I think it's important that, I don't think what we're going to give us is one, two, three, A, B, C. I just don't see that, like, oh, here's a generic statement.
Recommendation.
How you want, and then you do.
Bottom line is, there's no playbook on this.
There is no playbook.
Nobody has a playbook. We can sit here and brainstorm all day long and do the best we can because what we're doing, we're going to have it. Okay, and that plan can be absolute garbage the very next day, you, absolutely, okay? We don't know what the fire system is going to do, we have no clue. All it can do is plan as best we can, which we're doing, like men. Those people who are spending all the time and effort to try to think of what you might think of or what they might think of, we can't possibly, well, that would come up with all the answers. There's no one answer, there's no playbook. And I think that if we take anything out of here tonight, bottom line is, we like everybody, the parents, the children, all of our students, our teachers, our staff, everybody, the key to this to be is flexibility. We've got to be able to be flexible and make decisions as quickly as we can, given the information that we have. The guidelines are nothing more than guidelines, they're not rules, they're guidelines, okay? So the bottom line is, whatever you're thinking about today, I guarantee it's going to change tomorrow. It's going to change tomorrow, just be flexible. It's all we can do. And if you don't like it, hey, you got a better idea? We'll listen, if not, it is what it is, deal with it.
And then going, some of that stuff that Rex is talking about, their budgets are going to flex. I mean, if they're, if we used to go on three buses and now we have to go on six or eight buses, we're going to have a lot more.
Well, not the same, that's all.
And the ticket, you know, at the ticket counter.
All of that cost.
You can't have all the people there, then Casey's not going to have the intake of dollars.
A lot of implications, a lot of implications. Do you see the trend or whatever? Are they going to allow people to watch? Or do you think they're going to just like they did? No, of course. I don't know if they're going to play it, but play in front of nobody. I just don't know. I just don't know. Everybody, and I think this made this change in the executive director and the OHSAA certainly has not helped in terms of right in the middle of this thing, you have to change your leadership there, you know, it's just like, yeah, it's just further complicated the situation, but we just don't know.
Steve, just one thing, you had mentioned online ticketing before, and I just want everyone to hear it. We have had difficulties in the state with some of the companies that sell online ticketing. So we need to be really careful to make sure that we're dealing with a reputable entity if we go that route.
It's a lot. Do we have, like, occupancy number with the stadium? Yes. Two days closed with it? If you just say, hey, you've got 300, you're out, or something like that? Excellent. That's one of the things we heard in fall sports where it happened, that there's a missing capacity.
Come on, and probably for the parents, because if you have band care, you have football care.
Right.
You're going to fill the stadium, so it's not going to be a general public. Parents, which is who I think should be.
Right.
You know, if you've got a son or a daughter that's in one, it's just right.
Absolutely.
Not Tim Smith, who his cousin played five years ago. I mean, I'm not saying that in a mean way, I'm just saying, if it happened to your kid and they were on that field and doing the stuff, you know, I mean, they're, you're going to perform no matter what.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
We do.
And we got into discussion, and now I think we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Zappala. Mrs. Galloway, hi. Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Mr. Yachtabogi.
Hi.
Mrs. Knight.
Hi.
Brother, we're in Mr. Sanders for your next.
Hey, with the educational.
Yeah, educational recommendation.
You're wanting to educate.
This is not my turn, I want my turn to be finished.
Actually, most of the Sarah's items. So Sarah, it's great to have you here.
That's awesome, true.
But seriously, I know the board's had an opportunity to review these, as you recognize, most of these items are things that we approve on an annual basis, contracts for our students with special needs. Most of what you see here, that's what we're looking at. We do have the Online Academy Handbook, which Sarah provided that update. And then also photography agreements. That was a process that was led by Mr. Molnar and building principals and a recommendation there for those contracts. So with that, we'd like to recommend approval of items 11A through 11J.
Mr. Zappala, second.
Any discussion? Here we go.
Hey, didn't we not have a problem?
I was going to ask that same question. For the sports, for the pictures. Yes, and we, they had conversation, committee had conversation about that because I think it was in fall, fall sports, as I recall.
Volleyball, I think.
Volleyball, golf, I want to say, was in there. And this was a topic of conversation. And of course, it was addressed during that process and it was a consensus among the principals that this was the direction that they wanted to go. In fact, I think Casey was also involved.
And it is only for this year?
Yes.
Because it was a, with everything that was going on, it was discussion that was happening during all of the closures and things. So this one, if I remember correctly, is just this school year only with them we were going to.
And part of that was making sure, hopefully, that this, this fall sports situation doesn't improve. And if not, then we're going to come back next year and obviously looking on it.
I'm commercial.
I think, that's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up, Sarah.
We don't have fall sports going into term.
Yeah, well.
Then you can't come back, and see, we did it right.
In this case, it's tough. Mistakes, that's.
Right. Anything else? Mr. Yakubozie?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Gellus, hi. Mrs. Meyer?
Hi.
And this is recommendations.
Yeah, just one item I'd like to work on, approval for item 12A. Discussion?
Mrs. Gellus, hi. Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mrs. Meyer?
I would say before you go into executive session, I have one other item that I would just like to mention. Steve, I forwarded an email to you, my hearing being.
Yeah, I got it too.
So you all got it. I couldn't see what you all got on the screen. Yeah, so I forwarded, so I was going to make sure that. I, because it was sent individually or I didn't copy, because I didn't see anybody else on the line.
So I said something too.
My thing, I know there were a few issues, you probably got one too. But I wanted the board to be aware that I did respond. And he had asked about purchasing a portion of the shoe property. And I indicated that this time, we'd like to pull off on doing that because we're not sure of our long-term plans for that property. So I did follow up and I did email him this afternoon. Perfect, I just, I mean.
Yeah, you couldn't tell.
I couldn't tell, so I thought, well, I'm going to text.
That's why I was getting messages.
Yeah, well, I was saying.
There's a lot of pieces of property that abuts his property. You know, that's what process is, believe me, to do. Yes, I know.
Yeah, great.
So you responded? Yes. Perfect.
All right, so I would like to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, devotion, or compensation of public employees with no action to be taken. So.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gellus. Mr. Yakubozie. Mr. Engel. Mr. Zappa. Mrs. Meyer.
Hi.
Thanks, y'all.